I'm good, how are you? What's that?
I think it got to fifty this afternoon.
Did it? I was only outside long enough to walk to my car.
Well, I was not much longer than that, but it was, I actually moved around without a jacket for a while at four o'clock, four thirty, whatever. Hello, Jim.
You can't hear me. I said hello to everyone. Hello Ted, Emery and Rob.
Hello Jim, hello Ted, hello Emery.
One of my dogs has gas.
I have, I have one that has that issue.
Oh, well.
So I don't think Bonnie will be joining us.
I think so, it's.
Okay.
Wait a minute, yeah, it's just.
Yeah, it's not quite six.
Beautiful afternoon, wasn't it?
It was a gorgeous day. Hello, Andrew.
Hey, how are you doing?
All right. Okay.
This is workshop.
All right, so it is six o'clock on Thursday, February the fourth, and we are here for a workshop to do, to learn more about the possible adoption of the 2018 ICC codes for construction. So the first item on the business, on the, on the agenda is that topic, but before we start, I want to inform, we have seven participants on, in addition to us as panelists. And unfortunately Bonnie will not be able to join us this evening, however, she will be listening by YouTube, she's traveling this evening, so she will not be here to join us. So, and Robin Davis is with us as well. So again, the first item on the agenda is a presentation discussion of the changes between the 2012 ICC codes and the 2018 ICC codes, including discussion about the residential fire suppression requirement. And Robin is here, and I think Robin's going to lead this discussion. So Robin, whenever you're ready.
Well, good evening. Um, yeah, the question, um, tonight is, is in reference to the possible change from the existing 2012 ICC codes to the 2018. The 2012 was adopted by the city back in 2014, actually November. This was somewhat done in conjunction with of the preliminary firm maps, the flood insurance rate maps that were adopted in 2015, March of 2015. Along with that, the city, with the flood maps, we've updated the flood ordinance, which included the section of the codes, the building codes that reference the flood resistance section. So not only is it going to be, if we upgrade, update to the eighteen, we're going to have to keep in mind that our flooding insurance, our flood ordinance are tied to that, somehow, if you want to continue to do that.
Right. So Robin, before, before you go much further, can you tell us what's the status of the county at this point? Are they working with the eighteen? I think these come out every three years, is that right?
Yes, the, the codes, the code cycles every three years. Normally, the county and municipalities, they do not upgrade every three years. I spoke to a gentleman from Millsboro, and he told me they try to do that. The county at the current time, Sussa County is working off to 2012.
They're still working off of twelve, okay.
Kent County has updated to the 2018.
Thank you.
Rehoboth, I think is working off to 2018. They just updated theirs in, in late 2019. And I think Millsboro is the only other municipality in this area that's doing the eighteen. Everybody else is right around the twelve, and I think Seaford's still doing the nine, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, thank you. Robin, there's going to be a new one in 2021. Do we have any advance intel about what that's going to involve?
No, again, we, we, we get a pretty good, I, I don't know if you can see this, this, this book here is just for the residential code. So there's a building code, there's a existing building code, there's a property maintenance code. This book here shows the significant changes between 2015 and 2018. ICC comes up with these books, but they only do three-year cycles. So there was one just like this from the 2012 to the fifteen. Again, there, there's a lot of pictures in here, I mean, I know it's hard to say, you see, but most of these things are modifications. They, they find from time to time, when these codes come out, that maybe they don't fit well, so they'll go modification to things. So it's not a total rewrite change, it might be something with technology, materials, testing and things like that, so they'll, they'll upgrade from there.
Robin, I have a quick question for you. Is, and what we are going to be considering is an adoption of the entire code. You don't do an à la carte choice, do you? You have, it's the whole code or not, is that right?
What we did, what we did in the past, you know, we, we did it all, we did the international building code, the, the, the residential code, the property maintenance code, the existing building code, the fire gas code, the mechanical codes, the state regulates the plumbing code and the energy code. And they've already changed to the 2018.
Okay. All right. So of the ones that are available for us to consider, we would be considering all of them, is that all that's available to us? Or just as the fire suppressant business?
The whole section of the code is, is available for whether you want to adopt it as it is, adopt the modifications. That's, that's, that's your choice. Again, if you, the changes are part of, our, our code is, is under chapter seventy. That's where all the modifications are identified. Any changes that the mayor council would like to make were, are codified in, in chapter seventy.
Okay, thank you.
Robin, I'm a little confused about what you said about the plumbing code. That the state governs it and they've moved to 2018, because our code says we adopted the 2012. How do those fit together?
We're gonna probably have to change ours, our, our chapter seventy section that says that we do the, that we, now we have to enforce the 2018.
We may want to take out the reference to which plumbing code and refer to the state, because the state statute requires that municipalities use whatever is adopted at the state, exactly.
That's a good idea. Are, are there, I think you mentioned, Robin, another code besides the plumbing code that the state governs?
The energy.
Energy. That's the energy efficiency, is that correct? Like the envelope of a building?
It's actually worded as, uh, energy, I don't have the book in front of me.
While you're looking at, I'd like to remind folks that are on as attendees, we have two people that are, one's that's on by phone, I think that might be Bonnie.
Actually, that's Alan Lorraine.
That's Alan Lorraine, okay, thank you. And we have one person on who's just named himself as John. If you would identify a last name, so we could have a record of who's with us this evening. Thank you. The energy conservation.
Sorry, Robin, go ahead.
Correct, that is correct, yes, that's what it's listed as.
The energy conservation?
Yes.
So I think what Anne Marie is suggesting is that we amend seventy-eighteen and seventy forty to refer to the state. And then, if you could just walk through the other articles of chapter seventy to make sure that we're, by adopting the 2018 building code, we're also picking up the, what is, the existing building code to separate, the fuel gas code, et cetera, mechanical code. Not plumbing.
Okay, chap, in chapter seventy, it starts off as article one, and that's adoption of the building code.
Right.
And that would be the, the, the IBC code. And then, in there, in article two, it talks about what we would like to modify, or what we modified in 2012.
Right.
And then you move forwards to the, which article five has the adoption of the energy conservation code.
Right.
Then, then article six is the modifications to that. Article seven is the adoption of the existing building code. And then the modifications to that. Article nine is the adoption of the fuel gas code. And modifications to that.
Article eleven is adoption of the mechanical code.
Yes. Twelve is.
Modifications.
Modifications. Thirteen is the adoption of the plumbing code, which then we might have to adjust to say as adopted by the state or something.
Right. Fifteen is the residential code.
Fifteen is the residential code.
And sixteen, seventeen is appeals, and that.
Yes, the residential appeals and have been talking about the, the board of, uh, board of building appeals code, all that, yes.
So we're planning to, to change everything except the appeals section, article eleven, uh, seventeen. Everything else we're going to change, if, I, I gather, if.
Yes, or, or, you know, if you want to look at the building, the appeal section too, we can do that, if that's necessary.
We can change the whole thing, Rob.
Yeah, we can change it all if we would, if you prefer.
But the appeals section is, is ours, right? That's not governed by the 2018 code, is it?
Good question.
I think that's our bill, building code appeals and so forth.
Yeah, I don't think that that's part of the, the ICC code, because the ICC codes have a specific process that's very different from what we do.
I would say.
Because that's not right.
So then, Robin, the modifications to each of those separate codes, they were specific to the 2012 code, weren't they?
Correct.
So we'll have to go through those and see which of those we want to amend to apply the 2018 code, make sure the references are right and so forth.
Correct. And or take away, if we, if you prefer.
Yeah, okay, and, okay, well, thank you. I just wanted to get grounded here before we, before we let you loose to talk about the.
Yeah, thank you.
Robin, can you just repeat, I'm sorry, I missed it, which municipalities are currently operating on a 2018 code?
Um, right now, it's, I think it's Rehoboth, Millsboro. I think are the, the ones that I checked, I didn't check everybody, but in Kent County. That's ones, ones around us, I did not go up any farther north. I think Milford, I think Milford is talking about, or in the early stages also of going to the eighteen, but they're still in the twelve.
Are they holding, are they already holding meetings similar to this that are, that you know about?
No, I don't. The only reason I know that they're doing something is because this, Dwayne Fox from the State Farm Arches Office sent me some information about sprinklers. And he said, here's some information I sent to the city of Milford.
Okay.
Anne Marie, do you know if Dover, where Dover fits into this, P?
Dover's, Dover's still using the 2009 building code.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
A, a lot of municipalities that are under the twelve actually fall into the county. A lot of those municipalities have the county doing their inspections, or just decided to say, whatever the county's following, we will follow. Or consistency wise, if, if, we find out a lot of time we hear from builders that they're having to go here, you know, if they come into Lewis and they're doing the twelve, and they go to Rehoboth and they're doing eighteen. And then, we've modified some stuff that are different than somebody else's, it's very difficult for some of the builders.
And, and actually, a majority of the municipalities in the county, um, the county performs their inspections for them. Um, so, um, Milford, Seaford, Millville, Millsboro and Rehoboth, I think, might be the only ones other than us that, that do our own inspections.
Huh.
Yeah, Milton, Milton has a, an outside firm do theirs. First state inspection agency handles theirs, a private firm.
I know Georgetown relies on the county, so.
Yeah, that's, that's from the builders, and a lot of builders have complaints about that. You know, that's maybe some reasons, a lot of people would like a, a full state code, but I don't know if that would ever happen.
Okay.
Okay. Robin, you want to go ahead then?
Well, I don't know if there's any, um, I, I know, again, as, as Councilman Morgan said, that there was, the, the twenty, the 2021 is, is out. But I, I spoke to several gentlemen from the ICC in reference to maybe, okay, well, I don't, do we just move forwards with the twenty-one? The concerns that they had, again, they, they say, we will not recommend what codes you should adopt and which you should change, but right now, there's no training available for the 2021 code, and all your certifications through the ICC are off of the, the 2018. So it's.
Talk to him, excuse me for interrupting you, what does that mean, Robin? Is certification something that you and your staff have to do, or is that expected of builders? People who actually, you know, trade people, who, who does that affect?
It, it wouldn't, it would be nice if, if the builders would get, a lot of the builders won't, but from the building officials' ends, it's not a requirement. But it's always nice to have in case there is some legal issues that you show that you are certified in that, in that code.
Okay, but otherwise, are tradespeople expected to, to get certification?
Again, they're not required by anyone to do it, the state doesn't require it.
Okay.
Again, it would be nice, you know, some.
In my mind, I distinguish, I, I have a difference in between a builder and a tradesperson, you know, you know, that's the way I look at it, but, okay, thank you.
It's not required, you pay your money through the state and you can get a contractor's license.
The, the architects, on the other hand, do, they don't have the certifications, they have their AIA, and they have certain training requirements that they need to meet based on building code, so. That, you know, the, the people who are doing the building designs typically get training.
Plus, plus they're getting more and more, like your electricians, they have to have a certification, your plumbers have to have a certification. Now the HVAC groups are getting involved into the certification field. So again, there's still no area for a tradesman or a, a builder for certifications. Again, but they're not requirements.
Right. It seems to me that if we have tradespeople practicing trades, that and they're being certified in, you know, to a particular code, 2018, 2021, whatever it is, it seems that our staff needs to have the same kind of training, would they not, to be effective in their roles as inspectors?
Yeah, that would be correct, that would be my thought, yes.
Thank you.
Um, so that, that, that's, I, I don't. In, in general, it's just how, how we want to proceed with potentially moving forward. I, again, I wasn't really involved when we moved forwards from the 2003 to the 2012. But I know a lot of municipalities, when they do it, they have workshops and they have public comments, they bring the, a lot of the builders in, some professionals in. We've had several phone calls from a gentleman who's in charge of the Delaware Fire Sprinklers Coalition. You know, to talk about, if you want to, to, to bring him in eventually and talk about sprinklers.
So the sprinklers have been included in the International Residential Code for Townhouses going back to 2009. Was it nine or six? I think it's nine.
I think it's nine, Emery.
And, and more recently, I, I believe for, for single family detached, we, as well as most other places, have specifically pulled that section out. So that, that is one of the things, if we do want to move forward and update, do we want to accept those sections as, as part of that update? Or pull it out as we have in the past? And, you know, that, that's probably where you're going to want to hear, I would think, from the, the builders and contractors, as well as from the, the, you know, fire experts.
Right. I believe that, in fact, I know that the county pulled out from twelve, they, they did not require sprinkler systems. Uh, and so, it's not, you know, not uncommon. However, when you go to California, they've had it in their code for some time. Of resident, you know, freestanding residential units require sprinklers, so there. Wasn't Anne Marie talking about townhomes, though? No, but I'm talking about both. It's been, it's been in townhouses for a while, but, and it's still depending on, on where you are, or what you're building. If you're building over commercial, then that's another story, but if it's just freestanding, they don't, they don't require them yet here. So Robin, does the 2018 differ from the 2012 on sprinklers?
Actually, from what I've seen, but I don't have the actual book. Yeah, but I've got the sections, I, I went online and looked at the sprinkler section, and it's basically word for word, but there is a just something was added in there about another code that was referenced, that's all. But other than that, it just basically says, you, you need them in, or we shall have them in one and two family dwellings, and then townhouses is another section.
Thanks.
But overall, the 2012 requirement in eighteen is basically the same.
Have you gone section by section through the twelve and eighteen and compared them yet, Robin?
No, see, that, that's, that's the, that's the problem. Again, normally you, you can take the ICC book.
Right.
And to get a feel, but again, I'd have to get the twelve to fifteen book and the fifteen eighteen book, because we're making a six-year jump instead of just a three-year jump.
Okay. And are you working to get the copy of the twelve to fifteen and the fifteen to eighteen?
We can do that if we, if we, you know, if the mayor council decides to move forward, yes.
Robin, I have a question on the, whether code calls for fire suppression, obviously for new construction, that would be obvious, but for Lewis, obviously, a lot, you get a lot of gut jobs, right? Where you're coming in, you're gutting the place. Would that mean that those types of jobs would then be required to have the fire suppression, or are we just talking about new builds?
I'd have to look and see if there's a section in the existing buildings code. I don't know, normally it's always talked about if the residential code or the building code.
All right, we do have a, a comment in the chat from a, a Mr. Ed Rush, reads, I am a new resident of Lewis with forty-five years of fire service experience in New York. I am the new Delaware rep for the National Fallen Firefighters Foundation. I am a huge advocate of residential fire sprinklers and would love to have the opportunity to weigh in on your discussion. Anne Marie, are, are we ready to hear? Are, are you all ready to hear from this gentleman?
I would think, yeah.
Yeah. Could do.
I'm looking. Ed Rush, got it, got it.
Right, thank you.
And then we also have somebody else who wants to comment after him. So Mr. Rush, you should be able to speak now.
Okay, hi, thanks. Thanks for the opportunity. I wasn't sure if you were going to be taking any kind of public comment at this point or not, but, um, I did want to weigh in, because I'm, as I mentioned in my, my chat. I'm a new resident of Lewis, been moved down here from New York, I have forty-five years' experience both on the career and volunteer side of the. Been moved down here from New York, I have forty-five years' experience both on the career and volunteer side of the fire service. Uh, and I'm also the new Delaware rep for the um, Everybody Goes Home Program for the National Fallen Firefighters Foundation. And the uh, quite a few of the fire service organizations are huge advocates of residential fire sprinklers. And I'm sure there's, there's a few other people on here. I know you heard from uh, you know, Paul Eichler, who's the uh, um. Delaware Fire Sprinkler Coalition, there's a few other people that, um, you know, you definitely should hear from on this. Uh, i- it's, you know, th- there's really no reason, you the, the ICC code was written. Um, with sprinklers in it, and these are, you know, national experts that developed this code. And they, you know, they include the residential fire sprinklers for a really good reason. You know, fires burn so much faster and hotter now than they ever did. You know, twenty, thirty years ago, if a fire started in your kitchen while you were sleeping, you had fifteen, twenty minutes to get out of the house. Now you have three minutes. Um, you know, before that fire is going to spread to the point where, you know, you might not be able to get out of your house. And there's, you know, there's a lot of people that are killed in residential fires now because they burn so much hotter and faster. And, you know, there, so there's, a- and there are some items in the ICC code. That are in there for the builders because you have sprinklers. So they allow them to do certain things because of the sprinklers. You can't look at it in a vacuum. If you take the sprinklers out. There's those other things in there, like they can now do, you know, prefabricated stairwells made out of um. You know, lighter and and material that burns faster, you know, they can, they can do um, you know, less fire uh. You know, stoppage, things, there's things in the code that are in there because they're putting sprinklers in. If you take the sprinklers out, you're now making it an unsafe code. And there's really no reason to take it out. Now, you'll hear from the builders, the who are gonna, who are going to want it taken out. Because they don't want to build with sprinklers. Because it makes it, you know, there's a number of reasons they give for it, but quite honestly, none of those reasons are valid. You know, you're going to hear things like, you know, water damage. Well, a sprinkler puts out like fifteen gallons a minute. A fire hose, when we come in with a fire hose, a hundred and twenty-five gallons a minute. So there's already going to be a lot more fire damage, and there's going to be a lot more water damage from the fire department. You know, you're going to hear about things like false alarms. The technology is so good now that you're just not going, you you just don't get the false alarms. My town that I worked in and volunteered in has had residential sprinkler requirements for about twenty-five, thirty years. You know, you don't see the, the only time you see broken sprinkler pipes basically is when they freeze. Because people have not properly maintained them. You know, it it's a myth that suddenly sprinkler heads are going to go off and create all of this water damage in the house. The other thing that you're gonna see um. That you're gonna see in uh. You know, and people say as a a negative is the, you know, the cost. The cost is minimal. I I built a house in Lewis, like I had a house built in Lewis. I had residential sprinklers put into my house. Um, had a little bit of a fight with the developer to get it done, because they, quite frankly, didn't want to do it, but I persisted and had it done. You know, it cost me less than ten thousand dollars in in addition, you know, in addition to the house. Uh, you know, which is nothing, I mean, it it's, they, and and that's more than it should have cost. If this was, house was built in Maryland, it probably would have cost five to six thousand dollars. The national average is less than two dollars a square foot. So, you know, my house being twenty-five hundred, so, you know, it should have cost like five or six thousand dollars max. That's what it costs to put in, um, you know, uh, upgrade your countertops or upgrade your flooring. Uh, put wall-to-wall carpet, you know, it it just, the amount that it costs is negligible. But it absolutely saves lives and it saves property. So, you know, there's really, a- and like I said, I can't, you know, reiterate enough. It's in the ICC code for a reason, because the national experts feel that, you know, it's it's necessary. Newark, Delaware, has had the sprinklers in for a while. You know, you're going to hear from, uh, actually, the national average is about a dollar thirty-five a square foot, I'm getting some information as, you know. A- as I'm talking from from Paul's actually on here too. You should talk to him, because he's the one that's the real expert in Delaware.
We're gonna unmute him, he keeps putting things in the chat, but we're gonna, we'll bring him on to to share his expertise as well.
Yeah, th- there's another woman, I'm not sure if Cher Grog is on here or not. If she is, you need to hear from her. She had um, five relatives killed in a a house fire. In a house in Maryland, she now lives in Delaware. She tells the story a lot better than I do, but if that house had been built. A couple of years or later, it would have had residential sprinklers. And she, you know, she's texting now, you definitely want to hear from Cher. You know, you you have a couple of people on here that are real national experts on sprinkler systems. And like I say, you're going to hear from the builders, because they're not gonna, they're going to want you to take it out. Um, because it makes it easier and cheaper for them to build the houses. But quite honestly, you know, and they're going to tell you that it's going to hurt development. It's not true. Anywhere where the sprinklers have been, you know, instituted, you don't see downturns in development. You know, people are still going to want to come to Lewis, as a matter of fact, I, I, being a new relative, I see a lot of things on blogs and all that. You guys are probably trying to slow down development. You know, a- and so, you know, it it's the type of thing, I, you know, I'll I'll kind of shut up, because I could talk all day on it, but. I really urge you to to listen, you know, what I have to say, listen to Cher, listen to to Paul. And um, you know, before you make the decision, and if if you, if you hear any negatives. You know, talk to us before you act because of those negatives. Because quite honestly, there's a lot of myths out there and a lot of misinformation. That we can um, you know, that 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 we could basically debunk for you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Rush, may I ask a favor of you? Would you please make sure your contact information is available to Anne Marie?
Do you type it in the chat or send? My cell phone and my email in the chat. Because I think I had to put it in in order to get on, but I'll. I'll put my.
Appreciate it, thank you. All right, you want to bring Mr. Eichler in?
Well, so Cher has her hand up, and then there were a couple people, so let me bring Cher on. She did put um, in the chat about her brother's family, and I do remember that horrific fire.
And while Anne Marie's doing that, I I I received an email from Scott Tanner, he's he's in charge of the. Uh, Building Department for Kent County, when I asked him about what section of the code or what year code they were working on. And he he cheats, yeah, when I asked him about third sprinklers, and they did remove that section of the code that Kent County. They do not require sprinklers. They added the wording may and maybe installed. Because he did reference state law requires builders to give their customers the option. So they've got to tell them. They can't just let it. How they do that is, I don't, how the state's going to follow up on that, but they have to give them that option.
It doesn't sound like they gave Ed that option.
Doesn't happen, they they do the minimum to, you know, they hide a a, in a, in a big document that I get with all the uh. You know, the um, the contract, there's one sheet in there that you have to sign, as you're sitting there signing a whole bunch of sheets. And, you know, they go, they they didn't give me pricing, they didn't do basically what they're required to do, so that's another issue.
Yeah, and and in the memo from Dwayne Fox to Paul, he he talks about um. In in the average, he said, the average cost to install a thirteen-D system is about two dollars a square foot.
We've also, as he answered earlier, uh, and there was something in the chat that Newark has had added requirements since two thousand and two.
So Cher, you're unmuted, you should be able to talk, and then there were a couple other people will bring on.
Hi, I'm I'm here, um, should I video or should I not video? I don't know, it doesn't matter to me. Can you all hear me? Okay, um, um, yeah, I'm here because I'm an advocate now for fire safety. Because I'm my, I lost my brother, my sister-in-law, and their four grandchildren in a fire in two thousand fifteen. Um, it was started in the middle of the night, and um, and just let me give you a quick scenario, so you know how fast fire is. Three twenty-eight, well, first of all, my my hu- my brother's house was state-of-the-art, it had everything except. Fire sprinklers inside. Um, unfortunately, he was surrounded by water on three sides. He had a pool. And he felt that he was safe, and they would pump water from the pool and the river around him and all that kind of stuff, so. If there was ever any problem, he didn't need fire sprinklers, because he'd not realized, as I did not realize at the time, where he would have had them. Um, how fast fire is now, I mean, we thought you had fifteen minutes to escape or whatever. We used to have in the fifties, we don't have that anymore, we have three minutes or less. And what happened to my brother's house is at three twenty-eight, the smoke detectors went off. And it went directly to the fire station, because his alarms were connected to the, you know, his, his fire detectors were connected to his alarm. So anyway, um, at three thirty, that that was three twenty, at three thirty-one, his neighbor. Was an insomniac, and she saw an orange glow on her um window. And um, she, so she looked through the curtains, and she saw that the entire house is on fire, and that there were flames shooting through the roof and the windows. Um, that was three minutes after. The detectors went off. Uh, it didn't give my brother any time to put out the fire, to escape. Um, they had children in the house that were on a completely different area than they were. They could have run out possibly from where they were, but they were not going to. They were, of course, going to save the kids, because there was no fire um, escape plan in place. Because this was the first time the kids, his grandchildren, had had to sleep over. So, um, unfortunately, very unfortunately and tragically, they all perished that night. And I know by the time that the firefighters arrived there at four, at three forty-four. Um, the bottom line is everyone was dead, they could not even enter the house, it was a. An inferno, one person tried to get in through the garage, and they were pulled back, they were all pulled back, they were told they can't go in, there can't be anybody alive there anymore. And um, and they weren't, I mean, it was a sixteen thousand square foot house. They could have run, if they could have, but you know what, it was the middle of the night. And ninety percent of fires that occur, occur in your home. Uh, not fire, fatal fires, fatal fires, I'm sorry, fatal fires occur in your home. They don't occur in the office building that's required to have fire sprinklers. They don't occur necessarily anywhere except residences, in some two-family homes, some apartments, some single-family homes. I mean, that's where this ninety percent of the fatal fires occur. And I think that, for me, it's, my my brother's house was built a year after the code was changed to include fire sprinklers. I mean, the year before, the year before, I'm sorry, so he did not have them, because it wasn't required. I think that a lot of people who aren't informed. Don't elect for fire sprinklers because they're not informed, and everybody thinks it will never happen to them. We thought it would never happen to us, you always think it won't happen to you, it'll happen maybe somebody down the street, or maybe somebody that you don't know. But never somebody in your family and never you. So people elect what what Ed was talking about, they elect the granite countertop, they elect the beautiful carpet. Because they can enjoy that every day, and God forbid, they're not going to need that freaking fire sprinkler, you know? I mean, why spend the money on that when they can enjoy something every day? Um, I think if people were more educated. As they should be. When builders build a place and give them the option. That they should be able to possibly decide. But you can't guarantee builders are going to educate people. Um, I just moved here a year and a half ago. And um, I'm in the house in then, and the, it's a new neighborhood uh called the Overlook. And I was the only person in the neighborhood that elected fire sprinklers. And I was told everything, I got all the sales pitch, I could make this choice and that choice, and the, you know, and the doors and the windows and the hardware and all this stuff. And nobody mentioned fire sprinklers to me, and finally, I said at that very end, you know. Do you offer fire sprinklers? Because I want fire sprinklers, and they were like, oh, no, no. People usually sign this form, and it's just a waiver, you don't need fire sprinklers in your home, we, we, nobody has them. I I mean, and that proved to me what happens when you leave it up to people themselves. I mean, I would love to give it to free choice, but I don't think that people are aware of how fast it is nowadays. Just like, I mean, we're well-educated people, I mean, master degrees, whatever, you know, doesn't matter. Uh, if you're not educated on fire, you'd think it won't happen to you. And I just want to stress that point, um, everybody here has the right information as far as the costs. Which which totally, I mean, what is the cost of a human life? The cost of those six lives, to me, I would have paid anything to save them. They're wrong, there's nothing I can do, and um, and do I beat myself up every day? Yeah, because I didn't know enough to tell them. I I had a conversation with my brother about fire sprinklers. Um, about a year before the fire, and he said, Cher, don't be ridiculous, when you come over, this is what's going to happen. You're going to burn the toast in the kitchen, and it's going to set off the fire sprinkler, and it's going to ruin all my furniture in my home, because you can't cook. And I was like, Don, that's not the way it works. But I didn't know for sure, because you know what, you watch TV, you see the movies, you see Die Hard, where he lights them. A little lighter and and the whole thing, and the whole building goes, you know, it go, all goes off everywhere. That's a lie, I mean, my mother, my mother also suffered um in a fire at uh Brandywine, assisted living here in Fenwick. Uh, a little over a year after, no, a little over four years after my brother's fire, I'm sorry. Um, but around the same time of year, and it was put out, that fire was in one room, it was put out by one sprinkler. And it saved everybody in that building's life, one sprinkler. The damage was under a thousand dollars to the whole, the whole place. And it saved every life. So for me, it means a lot, it means a lot. Um, and I just want you to know, i- it's really important to save people. And um, if you looked into the numbers, you would realize how important it is. So thanks for listening to me, I really appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, sir, very sorry for your loss.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that.
John Waters has asked to to speak, so he's up next.
All right.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. Pennsylvania, Paul Eichler asked me if I would sit in on this, just to listen. Uh, I've been in the fire service for almost fifty years, thirty-five of them as a chief officer. I started studying fire as a, as an academic pursuit many years ago. And in fact, I convinced my community, Upper Marion Township. Most of you have never heard of Upper Marion Township, but if you've ever come to the King of Prussia Mall in Pennsylvania, that's where Upper Marion is. We passed our first residential sprinkler ordinance in nineteen eighty-eight. So we're going back literally three decades. During that time period, when I was going before my elected officials, I listened to every reason why you shouldn't have them from the builders. I asked the builders who their fire protection expert was. And so far, thirty years later, uh, I became a, twenty years ago, I became the uh. Chairman of the Pennsylvania Residential Sprinkler. And I've been asking the builders the same question, which is, who is your fire protection expert? And I've never gotten an answer. You ask any fire protection expert, ask your local fire chief. Should you have them or not? I had the opportunity to study fire department response times, did a uh master's level paper on it. And what I found was that you could put a fire station at every intersection in Lewis, Delaware. And still, you can't get there fast enough to be flashover. Flashover is a technical term for when the fire essentially becomes deadly. What you're really putting in here is a flashover prevention system. The fire departments cannot get there fast enough to no fall of their own. They can't get there fast enough to stop flashover, and the only system out there that can do it is sprinklers. In fact, in Upper Marion Township, we have not put up an unsprinkled building. With the exception of maybe a backyard shed, without automatic sprinklers since the late eighties. Because we we realized that doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result isn't going to work. And my manual fire suppression, God bless our guys for going out every day and doing it, but they're behind the eight ball. This, the building is going, or the compartment is going to flash over just about the time they're leaving the firehouse. So I have lots of stuff, if you'd like to see it, I can put my contact information in if you would like. But the real question is that you need to ask those who oppose residential sprinklers, or any sprinklers for that matter. But the real question is that you need to ask those who oppose residential sprinklers or any sprinklers for that matter. Who is your expert in terms of fire that's telling you that this is not needed? The last thing I just want to hit you on is, um, the buck 60, buck 30 a square foot, $2 a square foot number is for a separate piping system for the sprinkler systems. The International Residential Code and NFPA 13D, which is the installation standard for residential sprinklers, allows the domestic water lines to supply the sprinklers. So now you are cutting the cost drastically because you're no longer putting in domestic plumbing and a separate system for fire sprinklers. You are putting in a combination domestic plumbing and sprinkler system. And I had a builder, he was putting townhouses in, he wanted to do the, uh, the combination system. And when it was done, I asked him, how much did it cost? And he said, John, it cost about the cost of the sprinkler heads. He says, it was close to nothing. Cause I was hooking in the plumbing I was already putting in. So you should look at that also. I will provide my contact information if you'd like, if you'd like it. I have heard every excuse. I have heard every argument. I've heard every question. Because I've been doing this, advocating sprinklers, and having them been, having put them in for over 30 years and I'm here to help.
Great. Thank you, John. Appreciate your taking time to be with us this evening and look forward to having your contact information. Do, do we want to bring Mr. Rieckler in now?
Yeah. Um, and then Tom Panetta also has his hand up. So we'll start with Paul and then now we'll go to Tom. Okay, Paul, you should be able to unmute.
Okay.
Okay. An echo.
How's that? Is that better?
Much.
Oh, for goodness sake. Is that better?
Yes, much better. Thank you.
Okay. So first of all, my disclaimer, uh, I'm a little technology challenged this evening. My computer has kicked me out twice. So I rejoined twice. So if I suddenly disappear, I apologize. You've, uh, heard from, uh, Mr. Rush, you've heard from Ms. Grog, you've heard from Mr. Waters, all who are fantastic resources with regards to the residential fire sprinkler, uh, conversation. Uh, I'm more than happy to answer any questions or, you know, point you in the right direction. Um, I've got an ongoing, uh, email chain with Mr. Davis, uh, as he takes a look at this. I do not want to take more of your time than what you have, uh, dedicated to this evening. I, I do like to present my conver, part of the conversation in broader terms as well, that with, uh, the majority of the fires that your fire department is facing, they will be residential based. The, uh, quick actions that Mr. Waters was making reference to will make them small fires that will actually enable occupants to stay in their homes and not be displaced. You will see a significant reduction of air pollution in your community. Uh, in the event that a sprinkler dwelling catches fire. Uh, you will see a significant reduction on the impact of your wastewater systems in the event that, uh, a, a sprinkled structure catches fire. You heard Mr. Rush's comparison of the sprinkler head. Uh, for those of you who are in the office, uh, and look up, I'm assuming that your, uh, city offices are sprinkled. The, uh, capacity 15 to 25 gallons a minute, uh, as opposed to, uh, the fire department resources. And, uh, the unfortunate, although the reality, regardless of having a staffed fire department or volunteer fire department, uh, regardless of the staffing is travel time and how fast that fire is going to take over. Uh, I talk about it in terms of insurance savings, uh, the, your, your new residents will be able to get, uh, insurance discounts, doesn't amount to much, but every little bit helps these days through their homeowner's insurance. Uh, in fact, the creativity of Mr. Davis's office and, uh, in conversation with, uh, Ms. Townsend, I'm sure, that developers who are proactive on including sprinklers, you'll be able to take a look at the infrastructure to the neighborhoods, assist those builders in more than likely, uh, developing, uh, plans that will allow for a few more lots to be developed in that parcel of land. And that just means more houses that they're able to sell. Um, it definitely has an effect with regards to hydrant spacing and piping has an effect on street width. Uh, and those types of things that, uh, there are numerous resources that address that that I'll be more than happy to pass on to Mr. Davis, uh, for him to continue to look into. So it's multifaceted, but the absolute basic bottom line is that these devices are life-saving. These devices are property saving. The city of Newark has required all residential dwellings to be sprinkled since 2002. Uh, Mr. Davis can, uh, certainly contact Dave Tynan, the Fire Marshal of Newark to get his input on that. You can chat with the officials in Smyrna who have just within the last week had two properties, uh, saved by sprinkler saves. Uh, it is, uh, it incredibly decreases the impact on your fire department members. And in chatting with them, you'll come to learn that certainly cancer reduction is one of the biggest topics we're discussing these days. Specifically as a result of exposure to the, uh, byproducts of combustion, what's burning in people's homes. So it's a, it's a multifaceted conversation. Uh, you have builders building in Delaware that also build in Maryland that, uh, basically defies logic, except for the, uh, minimal cost savings that they're required to build, uh, the houses in Maryland. But, uh, that they're continuing to develop here in Delaware and they have no interest in including them in their plans, to what I can foresee. So, um, I, I in fact will be, uh, trying to bring down some additional information for Mr. Davis, uh, tomorrow, uh, that I'll make available, but I'm more than happy to answer anybody's questions, uh, at this time, if you might have any for me.
I have a quick question I'll throw out. Uh, for the homeowner, for a sprinkler system.
I can't hear, uh, Mr. Ritschert.
I thought I.
We can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, my question is, uh, what is the, uh, maintenance experience for?
I'm sorry, I can't hear him.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you hear any of us, Paul?
Apparently not.
I, I think it's on.
Hopefully I can answer the question. So, uh, Paul, can you hear me?
Is he on a, uh, on a, um?
Oh, he can't hear anything. Okay.
Ed, can you text him and let him know?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Tim, Tim, it sounds like Ed may be able to.
Sure. Okay. My question, Ed, do you, uh, do you understand what my question is? And let me, should I go ahead and phrase it?
Doug, I, I didn't hear the whole thing.
Okay. Well, I didn't phrase it all. Uh, what the question is, uh, when, uh, for a homeowner, the end user of these systems and a house that ages and so forth, do these systems require maintenance? Uh, and what is the, if the, if they do require maintenance and servicing, what is the, uh, what's the cost for that? Something like that.
All right. Um, first of all, uh, again, it was me, not you guys was the problem. I heard the end of Mr. Ritschert's question and the maintenance required on a residential fire sprinkler system is minimal. Uh, there is typically a test valve included in the system that a licensed sprinkler contractor can come out basically once a year as a service call to make sure that the components are working properly, the pressure is being kept, uh, through the system. And it is, yeah, a, a minimal cost with regards to, you know, making the choice of having somebody come out and check it out. Uh, Mr. Rush could probably comment with regards to what arrangements he's made for his house, even though he has extensive, uh, experience with the design of the systems and such. It, it, uh, really is not a large factor in the conversation.
Okay. And so the systems themselves are very reliable, is that what you're saying, suggesting?
Uh, the, the systems are very reliable. Uh, typically any stories with regards to accidental discharge and stuff is more the factor of somebody hitting the sprinkler head and knocking the fusible link out as opposed to, um, any type of, you know, pure accidental opening of the head.
Okay.
You, you talk about, you know, the anecdotal burn the toast. No, it does not create enough heat at the ceiling level to open up the, uh, sprinkler head.
Thank you.
Uh, I noticed in your chat, you mentioned that, uh, in, I guess it's in Newark that if renovation is more than 50% of the value, they're required to, uh, add sprinklers. Is that correct?
Uh, so that, that is not specific necessarily to Newark. However, uh, that is a, um, call it a, a standard, uh, that some communities have adopted with regards to thresholds on levels of renovation. Uh, Ms. Townsend may recall, uh, I, I draw that specific conversation from, uh, when Dave Truax was the Fire Marshal of the City of Dover.
Right. So I, I think that's probably also the, that's the threshold also set in the existing building code. Um, it's, well, and 50% is looked at in different ways. But do, do you want to talk about the 50%? Because that, Robin, because that's kind of where a lot of new code requirements get triggered.
I, I was trying to look through the code and it talks about, um, when you talk about different levels of alterations, uh, the, the existing building code talks about having to upgrade. There's a level one, level two and a level three, and then there's an addition, there's change of occupancy that requires it to kick in. But I did not see anything about a 50% number. Um.
All right. Want to bring Tom, I want to give Tom an opportunity to ask his question.
I had a question or just around, um, maybe one of the builders can answer this or maybe Paul or Red. Um, is the installation of these systems typically something a normal plumber can do or is it a specialized trade?
For the state of Delaware, at this time, the installation of sprinkler systems is regulated by the state Fire Marshal's office.
Okay.
They have a specific category with regards to residential installation. There is conversation taking place as to allowing plumbers to be able to do it. Uh, it actually falls back to not so much the physical pipe work as it does the engineering and design of the systems and that they're signed off by, uh, licensed professional engineer recognized by the state of Delaware. As it turns out, uh, at this time, there's actually a, uh, an organization up in Middletown that has taken this on, PHB Construction. Uh, one of the principals of that organization, um, is very active with the fire service in Middletown and also is a plumber. Um, they've actually started their own residential sprinkler subsidiary out of their construction company.
Yeah.
Okay. Tom?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to share a couple of thoughts. Um, uh, first of all, I, I think as everyone knows, I, I've got a turn of the century Victorian that we had renovated, we did a full gut on. And we installed a fire suppression system at that point. It was slightly more expensive than what the other gentleman have talked about because we had a backfit into, um, uh, a three-story, uh, construction, but the cost was still under $10,000 for a 3,400 square foot house, uh, including sprinkling the basement. Uh, it is a separate, uh, independent, uh, fire suppression system with fire protection, well, uh, NFPA 13 rated piping system. Um, we, we really need to be in, in Lewis here very careful. Um, many of our old homes are balloon frame construction. And even though the code requires that you do your best to provide fire stopping, um, that is only, you can only go so far with that. So we've all seen how quickly old homes go catch fire and burn, as has been spoken to by many people here. And also the separation distance between our homes is quite narrow in some of the old districts. And that also is a, uh, concern, especially NFPA 13 brings that up as, you know, separation and exterior cladding of the building from being able to catch adjacent buildings on fire. Um, you know, a lot of people bring up cost as an issue. If we're building out in areas where you are building low-priced homes, maybe that will be significant. But construction in Lewis is so expensive to begin with. As, you know, everyone has talked about, cost is really not materially significant when you're doing a $500,000 home. Um, one of the things that was talked about was, is that, you know, people should be given the option of when they're building a new house, but think about how many houses are built speculatively here. And so thereby the builder is not going to install a fire suppression system on his own if the code doesn't require it. Um, and then I guess the, the, the last thing is, is that, uh, uh, you know, one of the other things from a safety perspective is, um, and there's been a lot of discussion of this in the fire community is with the advent of most houses using truss systems for roofs, that is actually a larger safety issue for, um, firemen being on roofs. Uh, and matter of fact, there was, I don't know if the code has ever gone farther with this. There was talk about having to put notices on the outside of a house, warning fire departments that the roof structure was a truss. Because a two by four truss burns through a heck of a lot quicker than an old two by six, two by eight roof rafter. Um, so with that, um, that, that was all I had.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Any other questions at this point?
Uh, if anyone wants to see what a retrofitted, uh, fire suppression system looks like in a Victorian house, stop by.
Yeah, I, I'm actually, I, I'm impressed to hear that. I, I didn't realize that you had a, a system. That's pretty cool. Um, it, but the, the, um, age of the houses does add another wrinkle in, in
Yeah.
terms of how we would deal with retrofits. I think it's easier to require something on new construction, retrofits. Um, you know, especially with all the historic properties, we might want to have a broader discussion on. I'm not suggesting we don't do it, but it.
Well, but so many of the, so many of the, um, the old construction, I mean, it's a full gut inside in most of them. And once the bones are all exposed, you can do things like fire stop the floor. So you don't have, you know, chimney effects in the walls. And you have access to be able to put sprinklers in.
Any other?
I'm fully supportive of it.
Robin, uh, when do you think you'll have the, the information that you need from 2012 to 15 and 15 to 18? Are you weeks out on getting that? Have you ordered those, have those books already?
No, I haven't. I was waiting till this evening to figure out, you know, if we definitely wanted to move forwards.
Robin, is this the only substantive change in the code?
No, like I said, the, the, the book that's out from ICC, it's, it's called Significant Changes to the Code.
So this is, again, a pretty thick book, but again, some of it is not, it's more modifications, wording modifications maybe, but this is a significant change. So the grammar changes or whatever are not even in this book.
Oh, it seems to me that we almost, I mean, this whole fire suppression thing has been a very good discussion, but it seems to me we need to know what other changes might have occurred that in order to make, if we're going to make a change to this whole code, we ought to do it once. So, you know, can we go ahead and get those, the books you need? So you, so we can do this review?
Yeah, we can, we can move forward. I can speak with the gentleman again from ICC and, and get the reference material that I need.
Okay. I think, you know.
Randy Burton has his, his hand up. Are you?
Okay, Randy.
All right, here.
You're muted, Randy. Only Don, mute yourself.
Yep. I won't bore you with the video aspect, though, Mayor Becker.
Oh, that's okay.
So as, as most of you on the panel, but not all of the gentlemen speaking for the fire suppression systems know, I'm a builder for many, many years in Lewis and a historic preservationist at heart. And, you know, I think this is a great and progressive conversation that you guys are having. And, I mean, I have watched through the advent over the last thirty-two years of my career with the introduction of engineered lumber, how much easier it is for buildings to burn to the ground rapidly. So I am not one of those builders that the panel has mentioned continually that believes that fire suppression is a bad idea. But I would want to caution a couple of different things. One, from the renovation perspective, I think that it will require more conversation by mayor and council as to whether you, how you qualify renovation. Because although I appreciate what Tom did with his house, I also recognize the challenges that are presented with some of the other houses that don't have full existing joy systems in them that are built, you know, a hundred and fifty years ago or a hundred and sixty years ago. And one of the things that, as one of the members of our H Park Committee, I know that it could become a slippery slope with other challenges that we open up. So I just caution how you look at retrofits, full, not an addition on to an older house or, you know, not a full-scale renovation. But I think you're going to have to be selective with it because I think you could end up getting into destroying some houses' interior historic character, which is intrinsically valuable to us as citizens of Lewis. That's my one thought there. My second thought is that if, or suggestion, I guess it is, if the city elects to do two thousand and eighteen, I would urge mayor and council to develop some sort of a budget for peers of mine that you could, along with, as Mr. Davis, Mr. Bynum, and others within the department, get their training, that they could then offer some workshops. The county has done that over the years, as have other municipalities. And I think it would be very valuable and although you might be taking some heat from some different places, I think that guys like me, and I think there might be one other great builder from the town of Lewis who's on the panel, maybe some others would come and want to learn from, from what those changes are in IBC. We have built one home with fire suppression in North Rehoboth, it's nine thousand square foot house. I'm familiar with it. It can be costly, but in the long term, especially in our smaller, tighter houses with the engineered lumber that we put into buildings, man, they, they certainly build fast. So that, or burn fast. That's, that's my two cents worth as the mayor and our great city manager know, I'm always willing to throw my two cents worth in. So that's all I got for now.
Okay. Randy, I don't think we're going to adopt anything here right away, but, you know, we're going to keep looking at it. And you make some very interesting comments here. It would need to be evaluated before we did it. So thank you.
One thing I would add is that, you know, as we kind of move along in this process, you know, I was talking to Robin earlier and, you know, we said, this is really the beginning of something that's, you know, not going to happen overnight. This isn't going to be on an agenda this spring to adopt the new code. So we are glad to, you know, communicate with, you know, people, people like, like Paul and Ed, who are experts in the fire field, but also with the builders and the contractors to, to, you know, get the feedback to make sure that we do it right. You know, a lot of times when, when government gets a bad name about something, it's, it's more about how something rolls out and not necessarily what has rolled out. So this is a big change, and I think we understand that. And you know, we'll, we'll do whatever we need to, to, to make sure that it's clear as we go forward.
Getting the, getting the code books that Robin was mentioning will be helpful and just identifying what else might, we might want to consider changing.
Mr. Waters has one more comment.
Okay, Mr. Waters, please.
It's only two. The, the existing building code, the level three renovation would require residential sprinklers. And that is if you do more work to not fifty percent of the value, but fifty percent of the building area. But I want to be sure here that the International Residential Code that you're looking at now only is looking to do new housing starts. It's not, it's not talking about renovate, about retrofit any buildings. It's not talking about additions. And it's not talking about, as I said, retrofits. It's new housing starts only. One other thing, and Mr. Burton, I certainly am glad you understand how truss buildings burned down. It's good to see that a builder understands that. But when you do talk about historic structures, it should be understood that the academy or the Cathedral de Notre Dame talked about it putting sprinklers in twenty years ago. Said that it would detract from the historical fabric of the building. And they declined to do so. Go take a look at Notre Dame now.
Point well taken.
And with all due respect, Mr. Burton, I, you know, I'm glad you're actually, you sound like you're on our side. I like that. But be very careful, you know, as I said, they had the opportunity to sprinkle Notre Dame twenty years ago and said no. Thank you very much for allowing me to participate, even though I'm not a Delawarean.
Thank you for your input. Okay. I think we have a lot yet to learn here tonight. And as Anne Marie said, I think this isn't going to happen overnight. And I do think we'd be back to talk about what else we might want to consider as potential changes as Robin gets this material and has a chance to review it. Are there any other comments here this evening from members of council? Rob, it looked like, yes. You're muted, Rob. You're, you're muted, Rob.
Yep, got it. Item H seven on our February eighth agenda, is this, I assume that'll drop off?
Yes.
Yes.
And then, Anne Marie, do you think it makes sense to fix section seventy-eighteen and seventy forty to refer to the state instead of the two thousand and twelve code? Or should we wait until we adopt the whole thing?
I, I would do it all together because regardless of what the code says now, we're preempted by the, the state law and we're following the state law.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Second, Andrew, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. It's been a very interesting and informative discussion here. I appreciate all of you taking time to be here this evening. And we'll look forward to continuous discussion soon. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you.